...friendly and searchable friendly, they all say that they're the most search friendly, but.
Of course.
Yet to be seen.
I did speak with Eric last night, and he said that general codes searching is very good.
Okay.
They use it a lot, and it saves them time on researching issues.
We were really impressed with what you could use E code three sixty four, you could, um, it has full searchability accrued, cross referencing. There's the ability to do public or private notes, um, there's sample legislation, so if we need to come up with an ordinance or resolution, we can actually so- search other local and regional municipalities, people bears as a draft for our lawyers work on. Technically, that could help save on legal depending on ordinance worked on.
General Code two I read in there is the only one of these that participates in cost dollars.
Correct.
So, I mean, that's, I think that says something as well.
There, um, in order to update our code for our codification, their, their cost to us was forty nine hundred and seven dollars. So, that's just updating our physical.
That's general code.
Yeah, that's from general code. Their E code three sixty though, has an annual fee of almost a thousand dollars. It's nine hundred and ninety five dollars a year. So, I would definitely say it's a far superior searching system. However, I'm not sure how much the board is willing to pay for searchability for our residents.
You versus, yeah, I saw some of the fees for the other, then what does, thing went to not.
No.
E code also has the ability for us to add, um, if we want to put our permit applications online, we could add links and.
Yeah, and it's, it's something about the agendas and minutes and stuff like that can all be part of that searchable.
Yeah, it's user friendly printing, easy export to Microsoft Word, so you can actually export out in Word. You can email links, archive views, electronic indexing, and they have the ability to post meeting minutes, agendas, resolutions, budget, and pending legislation on their public docs online, just creating further transparency for the residents.
What was Keystone charging per year?
I don't think they were charging us anything for the online service. The searchability was exactly what we paid for.
It was really hard to get research with that.
Nothing.
Everything's an approval really, yeah. So, George Proctor Network, um, the Keystone, just a natural control.
Did pull up what you wanted.
Yeah.
So, is there a comparable, I mean, with American Legal and Unicode, is there?
American Legal Code and Unicode are comparable in cost. What they do is further updating of their codification. They say it's either seventeen or eighteen dollars per page to bring it up, to bring it online, to put it into the book, to add it to the supplements, all that stuff. So, it's eighteen, seventeen or eighteen dollars a page depending on the company. The problem is, is right now, we have not had a chance to pull all of our ordinances and resolutions to find out how many pages exactly we have.
Well, yeah, I mean, you're looking at, if forty nine hundred is general code at eighteen a page.
We got over five hundred.
Yeah, it's two hundred and seventy two pages.
Yeah, well, one of the.
I think we have more than two hundred and seventy two pages.
Probably. I think in general, general code is going to give us a better pricing to get us up to date. But again, their system annually is costs more.
What's the angle?
Or, for American Legal, their annual code or annual online coding portfolio is two hundred and fifty dollars. And Munich code is between two hundred and five hundred dollars depending on the detail of, of the product that you want. They have like a basic level, and then they have a more in-depth level. And again, the further, the more money you end up spending, the, the hope is that the greater transparency you have for the residents and the easier it is to search.
I know the township has done this before. If we can figure out exactly what it costs us in upfront fees, we could make, you know, an offer to, you know, send them an offer of what we're willing to, you know, add it up and say, listen, when you do it for this price? And, um, I know that's been accepted in the past, you know, so if it's like ten thousand dollars and we shoot them off, or listen, we're willing to become a client and go forward for, you know, for a fair.
With the, for the other two.
Yeah. So, they're all, the town has negotiated before, you know.
Right, no, yeah, but, uh, I guess my concern is depending on what that cost is.
We just need to find out internally.
The difference, you know, how many years is that gonna take of the difference in yearly maintenance before we break even?
I did put out an email to general code asking them how much their per page is, so that way we can compare more of an apples to apples and figure out what's the best.
Well, I mean, if they're willing to just, yeah, I mean, throw a number out there too, that's great, but, I mean.
One of our storm water management ordinances was a hundred and fifty three pages.
There you go.
You can frame our.
So, I mean, I mean, I know that nine hundred and ninety five a year is a lot, but you have to weigh that out against.
Yeah.
You're paying a yearly fee of the other ones, what's that difference? And what's the difference of the upfront cost until you start breaking even? I mean, if you're looking six, seven, eight, nine years before we even break even, I mean, is, is it a better deal to go with general code? I, I don't know. Yeah, that, that's something we would have to weigh out and try to figure out those numbers, but.
Yeah, and anything can change in that timeframe, laws can change or whatever.
Well, exactly.
Can change the nature of pricing.
And I guess any of them, would they be keeping it up to date every year as part of that fee? Right? Anything that comes in that we add, would they?
Anything that you have to recodify goes into that, that I think eighteen dollars a page.
Even with general code though?
Um, I believe so. Every time you add more code in.
I thought it said it's somewhat covered or something.
Um, I think on the proposal, it covers X amount of ordinances and resolutions that we have outstanding right now. But I think each time you update your code, there's new costs associated, which is, I think, why we got away from doing it every year or two like they recommend and got it into more like every five plus years.
Yeah, fee covers annual licensing, web hosting, and posting of new legislation between regular code supplements. Please note that this does not include the cost for codifying new legislation. So, we still have a fee on top of that.
Yeah, so I think they'll post it online for us, that's one thing, but to actually codify it in is another. I know, um, general code versus, I know American Legal Publishing Corporation really pushed about how they have a lot of attorneys on staff. They have one that's a full-time VA licensed attorney, um, and a lot of what they do focuses on the legal review aspect. Trying to make sure that our law, our ordinances stay consistent and are checked against the state and federal statutes. Not that Mike wouldn't be doing that already, but the code that we have is so big that these people specifically focus on looking for discrepancies in code and making sure that it all stays up to.
Is there any feedback from any other municipalities with, I think it's gonna say surrounding municipalities.
I thought, maybe we could.
I tried looking at that P S discussion where I didn't see anything.
Maybe some, yeah, see who's using what.
Yeah, I'd be interested to see. Yeah, whatever resources we can get at other municipalities, even just calling them up. What do they use? What's their impression of it? I mean, see if anybody around here uses.
A lot of people use general code, especially them like, um, like.
I figured a lot of people probably use that, but it'd just be interesting to get feedback from different municipalities that use these. I, I think most of these have some reference of townships that use them.
Yes.
So, you know, even reaching out to them just to get their opinion, I know they're not gonna put somebody on there that's gonna give them a negative opinion, but it's still worth reaching out to see and how they feel that, you know, is that nine hundred and ninety five a year truly worth it? You know, and, and support levels to things of that nature. And that maybe help us to, to narrow it down maybe to two of them and then make a decision from there.
Yeah, 'cause the only ones that reference it in Chester County is West Chesterboro and West Coast, and I see them everywhere.
Not for, uh, general code.
Yeah, yeah. So, it'd be interesting who's using it.
I saw it on West Crawford's.
West Crawford, Chester County?
Yeah, it's not on there, not in their handbook.
And they could just not, they probably put out a thing that says, do you wanna be a reference for us, and then they just said no, so, yeah. You know what that is, but.
Probably township that can code it.
Yeah.
Right, you know.
But, I mean, I think it's worth the, the effort to find out what others departments are using.
Yeah, that's a great, I mean, is, that's a great tool that you have before you get a lot, for a lot of things is, 'cause you can just get feedback and.
Yeah, it's a great tool.
Yeah, it can save us, you know, a lot of municipalities, horror stories can save us.
Yeah, somebody could say, oh, no, they'll go with Munich code, he took us six years to get our code. Yeah, something like that, and then it's, yeah, the money's less, but how long is it gonna take?
Yeah.
You know.
He saved us just by sending out one email to find out something.
Yeah, so, I think that gives us kind of a few more things to get, but this is good so far, I need to have three. 'Cause the other ones, seventeen, eighteen dollars a page, we get to the level of having a requirement, it's probably. So, if, I don't know if we can get to a spot where we know the number of pages in it, that's probably.
I think at least on the resolutions and ordinances that you said is put aside, I think we can figure it out from there, we just.
Yeah, we have a list of which ordinance we want.
So, most of this would be taking what we have with Keystone and then adding to it from there?
Yeah.
Okay, so that the cost includes pulling over one, is there already?
Yes, and then.
And then adding to it.
American Legal Publishing for a hundred dollars was able to secure us our Microsoft Word or Microsoft Perfect or Word Perfect version of it, so we weren't stuck with just PDF on it.
Okay.
So, should I bring this back up next meeting?
Yeah, I mean, if we get more information, I mean, just feedback on that, or if we get feedback in between, just forward it out to the board so we can review it before the meeting.
Yeah, and if you guys can look over the different proposals.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I looked over all of them, they're all pretty.
They're a little dry, but you have good information.
It's good material to read before bed.
Yes.
Knock you out. Yeah, if you can't sleep, make sure to bed.
And PMA?
Uh, the PMA, the Pennsylvania Emergency and New Association Application that we submitted has been moved to the next step. It was signed off that Storm Jonas was, that this area was considered a disaster zone for.
Saw that.
Um, subsequently, a whole new round of paperwork has begun, meetings and document pulling are in order. The latest application is a thirty-page instruction slash form slash contract. So, you're paperwork working us to death. At the next board meeting on four twenty-six, there will be a resolution that will need to be signed by the board. As long as the board is okay designating me as a person responsible for executing and providing all forms and documents to the government for the purposes of obtaining financial assistance under the Disaster Relief and Emergency Assistance Act. It's a con, there's also a contract that the board members would need to sign, and then signatures needed to authorize direct deposit of money directly into our account. They have an administrative prep meeting that is being held this Friday. I have to attend it. I believe Tony Serna though is going to be helping, um, go with me to help me understand and facilitate through the forms. The emergency management side, I don't understand, but the finances I get. I'm hoping that when Tag is back, he will be able to help me hunt down the material receipts, um, for the materials used purchased during the storm. That was the one piece left that we're still kind of holding up on.
Is there somebody else that can get that?
I might be able to work with Timmy on some of it. I think the biggest.
Just in case.
Yeah, the biggest expense would be the salt, and I think what I was, I have to check with them on Friday is, did we have to buy the salt during the time of the storm?
I doubt, I would doubt that, but.
We also rented, I believe we rented from.
Yeah, those, those both.
Yeah, it was like two hundred dollars an hour, so that's.
Yeah.
Yeah, if we can get some of that covered, that'd be great, yeah.
Weaver's and Green, I think it was Green Construction, Green Valley Construction, those are both definitely in there.
Okay, cool.
But the application is technically due on April twenty second.
The other thing, Pawnee's also like art somewhere, equipment was broken, you know, during that time, so we had some downed equipment. So, make sure you ask Timmy like for anything that we had to purchase. It doesn't hurt to put in for it.
Yeah.
And see if they cover it, 'cause we had a lot of our.
A lot of the stuff that, um, Tag had originally put on that had to do with like parts and pieces. So, my problem is just trying to figure out what part or which vehicle from what company.
Okay.
So, just pulling the actual accuracy on it.
So, equipment during.
They don't put in the itself, but.
Yeah.
The application is technically due on the twenty second, but our area representative.
And labor, and sorry, one year in labor, yeah, okay, just make sure, yeah.
Oh, and labor.
Yeah, 'cause anybody, if we had to have additional people come in, Tag had to call in.
We had a forty-eight hour period from Saturday through the end of Sunday, and anyone that was brought in part-time or full-time, all of that has been documented, including their hours, the rate of pay, and I'm hoping to talk to them about fringe benefits. I think there's a percent that you can actually charge towards, um, all of the benefits, but I couldn't find a number. So, I didn't, at that time, I didn't have anything in.
Interesting.
It consists of labor, materials, and then, um, any outside rentals that you had. So, those are the three main components.
Okay.
So, it's due on the twenty second?
It's due on the twenty second, but they said it'd be okay that we got it in on four twenty-six, since everything kind of runs late.
Right.
Real estate tax collection for March, um, for March, we received a check, it was three hundred and forty thousand, two hundred and seventy-seven dollars and ninety-six cents. That check will be deposited this week. So, year to date, we've brought in three hundred and ninety thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars and thirteen cents. We estimated overall that the tax would bring in four hundred and seventy-five thousand, one hundred and fifty-seven dollars. So, right now, we are at eighty-four percent of our estimated annual income brought in from that, which I think is pretty close in line with the numbers that we had estimated on people who would pay, um, before, I think, while, during the two percent discount period. I think that was fairly accurate. Uh, the next payment due date is by May thirty-first, that's when it due do. They should bring the, us the remainder of the money, or if not, very, very close to it.
There'll still be some people early, but.
Yeah.
Okay, that's good.
I have a couple random things, um, park expenses. Pond Watch wants to replace their chest waters. Is that something that I should bring to the regular meeting?
I have no idea what that is.
I don't know, you can just ask them to come in there.
Is it a pond weight?
Yeah, if somebody can come in and explain it.
Oh, they're like the overall suspender things that you would wear, um, that come up to your chest, so it makes it that way.
Oh, and a waiter.
Yeah, so it makes it so that way that can walk in the water. Um, I didn't know whether I needed to get approval for these types of things after the April or the, the twenty-sixth meeting.
I'm not sure how that works, if it's in the budget and it's part of the park fund budget, then I don't know if necessarily approval required for.
Well, we do have a park maintenance line item in our budget that I think has up to two thousand dollars in it. I just didn't know who can authorize the spending of money for.
How much, how much?
I think it's two thousand. I'd have to double check.
Oh, no, no, how much is the waders?
Oh, the waders would be about a hundred and fifty dollars.
It's only like a couple a year, I guess.
I think they just need one pair.
Just one.
Just looking for one pair of waders.
I think we could probably bring it up at the next meeting.
Yeah, yeah.
Maybe, but if we're gonna approve it, then we'll just.
I know, right now, currently, this board's serving as park and parks board, given that, I mean, not excluding the two new members, but we're.
They can't do anything without a forum, so. Much, maybe can we bump that back up on the, the site in the basement?
Yep.
Especially in the spring, it's possibly being here, so.
Um, the audit is about seventy-five percent done. Um, I talked to you guys about the cash versus modified accrual. I will talk to him about, um, seeing if he's gonna put something in his audit about that. Um, and we did our best to clean up escrow as much as we could for the audit. I think we got it to a good spot and we're able to identify this year clearly what is actual money that is due to us that we can expect, um, to still come in, so that was the first one. And then, um, and I know I've tried to reach out a couple times for, um, the administrative liaison thing. I didn't know whether you had time to meet soon or whether we wanted to reach out to the board and add an additional liaison.
Sure, I, I sent him a couple of emails, responses to you, and the one response that you sent back is, I asked you if you wanna put it in writing what you needed.
Yeah.
'Cause the liaison, maybe you're not familiar, but the liaison is just a messenger as a support setup. I saw your, um, your, your information about like coming into the office and, um, you know, doing things in office. I'm not authorized to do that. All I'm authorized to do as a liaison is to report back to the corporate information. So, that's why I was trying to save you, uh, just me regurgitating what you have already told me. You know, if you would like to put it, um, in an email or just announce it for the board, that's all I would do as well. There's nothing more that, you know, my first year, I tried to expand the liaison's, um, duties, but it's, it's been a messenger situation for a while. So, that's all I can do is just take what you're about to say and report back to the board and ask for approval. I'm not allowed to give any approval by myself.
Yeah.
But I'll, the majority of the board, so is, is there something you wanna bring up for now? We're all here.
No, I just, I went over everything I had for today.
Okay, that's what I've been watching, I mean, you've been doing that every time, so I wasn't, that's why the response when I asked you, what, what further things did you have, and then you said, you didn't wanna respond.
Yeah, I just brought it up to the board. I just, I brought it up at the board meetings.
That's probably the best thing, that's all I can do for you as well. Unless you wanted to physically show me something, I would still have to physically show the board themselves too, you know, for anything that you would want in that office or need for the office. So, I'm just trying to, that's what the liaison positions are set up as right now. Maybe it might expand, and I don't have a problem with that, if the board ever wants to discuss it again. As you're aware, we basically didn't have liaison positions, Joe looks at one year or two years?
Two years.
Two years, so, I mean, we just brought it back this year, so.
Yeah.
I'm up for discussion about expanding duties of liaisons at the boards, so.
Okay, anybody else on the board have any, uh, new business?
Did Eric's, what's going on with Eric's rock and, um, do we get any feedback?
I don't think we've gotten any feedback on that.
Okay, I was just curious, I wasn't sure where we stood. Do you, do you know anything around, did, do we have anything back from Dewey or what was going on with the attorney or?
I haven't heard anything on Manchester Farms or somewhere.
We can reach out there, you might get to see if he's ever.
Yeah, see what's going on, so.
See, I mean, he usually gives us an update at the month of meeting, but.
There's no dedication this time, so far.
No, but I'm aware of that.
Yeah, so, we're not receiving any funds.
Yeah.
Yeah, so with winter, I mean.
We weren't going to this year anyway.
Yeah, that's true.
It didn't get done, done.
Oh, that's, that's good.
We did build them for winter though. That bill has been sent out to them, so they're sitting on that now.
Dewey?
Yeah, Dewey for all the plowing from the storms during the storms.
And Eric's attorney's been quiet so far, or since that one. I was just curious where that stood, with that.
I can make sure Mike knows to.
Okay.
Include that in this next report.
All right. That's all for me, again.
Steve, can I bring something up, my own new business, or what?
Uh, yeah, sure.
Just to save, save some time during the regular meeting, um, our last, uh, planning commission meeting. Uh, it was pretty constructive, I thought. Um, we, uh, went through a couple of things that I have a kind of a grave concern over. It's gonna be how we track developments, old past ones and new ones. And we have the, uh, the, uh, Permit Extension Act that kind of put everything on hold and its interpretations, and how, uh, when there are certain deadlines and time periods on each development and each different stage of what it is, and ours are all over the place, older ones. And, um, different research that we have done on that. And I'm concerned about, uh, how it's interpreted on a couple of different levels, legally and, and engineering both, as to some of the status that some of the older developments are and some of the new ones that are starting to spring up again now that, uh, buildings starting to take root again. And, uh, uh, certain things I found that we missed out on when they had that Permit Extension Act. We could've charged for each development that had gone through final or in any stage of it and charged a certain amount of money to extend that, that permit period, even though it was state orchestrated. They said you could pay up to, you could have up to five thousand dollars in extension on any given development. And I went, oh, shoot, we've kind of missed that gate, I think. But some of the other deadlines for some of the things, um, I don't know how we should probably deal with them. One of the guys on our, um, on our board, Joe Prezone, he's retired legal, uh, profession, and he was going, you know. So, we got both perspectives of some of this. Uh, I thought it was pretty constructive and, uh, it's still gonna be like case by case, but we don't even have, um, a list of all the developments. You know, they used to be on that whiteboard right over there. You come in here, I mean, this is even before you and, or, you know, Ed and Joe was on. They used to all be labeled on there what the status was, whether it was hold or whatever, you know? And some of these now, um, you know, I see, I seen six of them that I was looking at. When, um, they brought in the files and the, what do you call them? Kind of like table of contents of all the files from Lamb's. Uh, I seen some developments in there I never even heard of, you know? And I don't know if they're old ones that are closed or what, but we were gonna take, uh, some of the members on the planning commission and look through certain ones so we can find the tax parcel number, so we can actually look them up to find out if they have gone through, um, uh, being recorded as a development or not. One of them was kind of tricky, it was actually recorded under the name Harkin, but that was the previous development where part of this that they're bringing about now was only, uh, about one-third of what that original one was. And they were trying to name the second one the same as the first one. So, that's a, a, a problem as far as how they track developments.
That's the property next to Rich Crass, yeah.
And those, those are kind of done from the county, and that's, goes by a name. And, um, like Fieldstone over there has four different names to it, Tell'em Blaze, uh, Fieldstone. Two others, I can't remember what they were right now, but I'm like, God, you know, how, you know, we need to do something for tracking, you know? Not only for, uh, you know, just keeping track of the properties and when deadlines are. Right now, there was no system in play, so we come in and talk with Lisa and Pawnee shortly, uh, a little bit about it. And I was like, oh, my gosh, you know, there's no tracking system that was left here from previous secretaries or any sort that actually said what they were, you know? And I'm wanting to see if we can get, uh, to get answers, that's why I'm bringing it up now, so we don't have to go through a lot of this, is to see about getting, uh, Mr. Crati, is it? C R O T T Y? Mr. Crati, uh, see if we can get Chris Della Pena in here and Rob, or somebody from his company to kind of see how we can, uh, sort this out. So, we got a tracking method, and that way, uh, with the escrows also, uh, we'll be able to keep track of that in that same process, you know?
I don't mean to interrupt, but it's funny that you brought that up because, uh, I attended the Brandywine Conservancy workshop. I think it was last Saturday, and that came up, uh, that's municipality. How are you tracking? Well, like this, this ninety day clock, you know, for the land, man, uh, land development subdivision plans. And I, I didn't know, I just came on the board side, kept quiet, but, so there are no, we have no way of tracking? I mean, is it, is it just, how, what is the process for tracking? If a developer walks in here and says, I'm, I wanna, I'm submitting plans, well, what happens?
Yeah, I think that's the planning commission's concern, is there's not truly.
There hasn't been a consistent one. They, they've had some, and then, you know, some staff have left and whatever system they were using disappeared too. There's been certain files for certain properties that have disappeared too, but you, you can't point a finger at anybody particularly.
But Dennis, there must, you were, you were saying a few times that there's a law as far as, uh, the expiration of a particular plan and when they need to act on that. I mean, some of this can be easily eliminated regardless of how, what the township's doing. The date on the plans, with whatever the law is that Mike's able to provide, we should be able to eliminate some of the stuff right off the bat.
It's, it's a weird combination right now, because when they put that Extension Act, or that Permit Extension Act in, that was to, to.
That expires, what, next year?
This year, July, this year. And it extended it for that period until that date. Now, if somebody still had six months before their permit was to expire, that is tacked on at the, it starts again on July and goes for another six months. And that's where a lot of confusion was. They had to put on a new act to clean up that language. Now, it's a little more understandable, and it was causing a lot of lawsuits, you know? So, now it's, it's clearer, but, you know, that's not gonna happen until somebody comes in and goes, I'm interested in this property. They had a permit for this, or they were granted that, you know? Our own ordinances tells us deadlines after, there's like one-year deadlines, there's three-year deadlines and five-year deadlines. And we got stuff that's ten and fifteen and twenty years past when they were approved. And if they weren't put in Chester County as a development and, um, accepted over there, then we've got a couple of those that says they're null and void.
And, you know, before we involve Mike or, or Della Pena, maybe the planning commission could just really screen those ones out that are fifteen or twenty years old before we involve the, the, the cost of the attorney. And then, that can be a quick question for him to say, listen, those are expired, they're, they're out of the way, and then we can fine tune it to really.